Okay. Um. Why don't we call the meeting to order and begin with the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes. I still need help with this motion, but um I don't know if I add this to the consent agenda?
We can add it. We could, um, maybe just it might be best best to have it by itself.
Okay.
Um, that we would put in a uh just local critical shortage would be the topic.
Yes.
So why don't we do that right after the consent agenda?
Okey dokey.
Great. And uh. Along with superintendent's report, we know a number of us went out to visit the site of the forestry work today. So we're gonna talk about that a little bit at that time.
Yeah, we go.
Uh, I think I need to have minutes removed. Or they're all separate now?
Or not, yeah, I think. Minutes are now separate from consent agenda.
Okay, perfect.
Mm hmm.
Okay. So uh why don't we have our public comments then, uh first session of public comments?
As of right now, there's no public comment.
Okay.
Is there, are there public? Yes, we have three. Okay.
Well, maybe just let them know that if they want to, they can raise their hand and.
Sure.
That will.
Wait a few seconds.
And we don't have a student representative with us tonight. So uh. We will move on if there are no public comments to the superintendent's report.
All right, well, last week, the varsity girls ended up playing in the playoffs. They did end up losing here at in the Pratt's. Uh, but they had a good season and so I'd like to congratulate them for uh what they accomplished. I think that if I were to say what they accomplished, having seen them play uh over the years and certainly this year was, I felt they really played as a more cohesive. Team and there was a lot of growth that was made by many individuals who were given a lot more playing time. And uh it was neat to see that level of growth. Uh, they represented opponent Middle Scott High School very well. And then the boys' basketball team is going to have their. Quarter semifinal game, semifinal game tomorrow, it's going to be held at Bo. They'll be playing Kearsars, Kearsars is the team that did end up beating them uh toward the end of the season or in the last game of the postseason. So they did win their quarterfinal game um here against the uh last year's champion Guilford. And um so if you'd like to go to that, it is at Bo at the Bo High School. And they're a pretty big gym seating area, that's why I'm assuming they are having it there. If they do end up winning um tomorrow night, then they will play in the final, I believe, on Saturday evening, and that's going to be at Keene State. Uh, so that's. Exciting. Um, the elementary schools, there's actually quite a bit going on. Um, right now, uh we continue to be in search for that literacy programmatic material, the materials and so forth. So that that process is going on. The along with literacy, this is um a a week in both of the elementary schools. And I think it's a. Read Across America. And so they are both uh having daily events for reading. I am going to one of the schools tomorrow uh in the morning and then in the early afternoon to read to a couple of different groups of individuals. And uh I'll be at another school later on in the week, um so they're gonna, a variety of literacy um. Events are happening. I think the Cat in the Hat is going to be at RMS later on in the week, that's kind of an annual thing that goes on. The along with literacy um within the school itself and kind of what we plan. There the partnership that we have with Franklin Pierce University has continued to grow. And so one of those growth points is that um we're going to be doing a family literacy night in both of the elementary schools in the spring. Um, that's going to be run by and large by a group of about seven or eight FPU students. Um, and an advisor and we'll have some staff members there as well. Those individuals are going to be working with um a group of students over a period of of weeks to um write. Their own stories, uh they're going to take a group of them, some of them who are going to be in a club uh over at RMS. We're gonna do, we're gonna pilot kind of an after-school club at uh at RMS. Um, do it at one place, see if we can do it well with the same group of individuals, that's gonna be called the Writing Nest. And so all of this that's happening, that the club at RMS called the Writing Nest. And we can duplicate that over in JGS later on if we want to, because they have a owl. And so there's everyone's birds, right, that are the ravens over at Franklin Pierce, eagles over at RMS. Um, they're going to work with these individuals and then go to, they're gonna write their stories, edit them and so forth. Then they're gonna go to Franklin Pierce and they're going to record their stories along with some interviews for a podcast that they're gonna put out. And we're gonna be able to disseminate that to the community. So that all should be happening by April of this year. Now, so more, so both of the elementary schools will have the literacy evening. In cooperation with Franklin Pierce University and then RMS will have that after-school club as well. JGS is going to have the group of individuals from Franklin Pierce coming in to work with the inquiry scholars that we used to do throughout the district, but try to get that back into place. So we have an even balance in both locations, both of them have to do with research and writing. Um, the inquiry scholar is a little broader, a little more open with uh teaching learners how to kind of explore something of their own interest and how to do that research. But we're really excited that we have that partnership. In other partnership news, again, at the elementary schools, uh we have that birth through eight grant. And so we've been able to uh rewrite some of our. Activities for that grant where we are taking existing partners that we have in the Harris Center. And also in uh River. The River Center. Um. And kind of, and I would say doing more with them. Uh, the Harris Center is just more programming for our pre-K and maybe kindergarten learners. And so that's exciting and so it's paid for at the grant and we've already started doing some of that work. And with the River Center, that's something where we believe that by getting them um into the schools, both Jaffrey Grade School and RMS and having them work with families of our pre-K learners. Um, and having some conversations, uh classes, I guess you could say, um on a regular basis for about an eight-week, ten-week period of time. Um, we're going to re-establish, I should say, a good partnership with the River Center that is going to benefit. Um, our communities, both of them. And uh we'll, we're also working with the library and that's another partner that we've um trying to boost both of those libraries. With the River Center, with um the Harris Center, which Harris Center has to do with. The outdoors, natural environment, so naturalists are coming to help keep our kids learning and excited about the world around them and be outdoors as opposed to in a classroom. So. That's all ongoing and we expect to have more to share as we get rolling along through the springtime.
Is that, is the River Center uh program, is that being done at the grade school or at the church where?
It's gonna be done at the grade school and at RMS, so both, both of the elementary schools, probably at different times. We're still trying to get the details down because of when. The idea is that we'd have two educators from the, two adult educators, basically from the River Center going to, let's say, Jaffrey Grade School in the morning. And when parents drop their learners off, they would, you know, kind of spend part of the time with the, like I say, forty, an hour and a half total, forty-five minutes. They'd get there forty-five minutes early with their kids, they'd have some social time together, they'd have some, um, you know, they really wanna talk about a specific topic and the educator's role with what the topic desires are. And then those kids will then go to their course classes and then there'll be another forty-five minutes where we just be with the parents and the two educators. And then do the same thing maybe in the afternoon at RMS, now that might have to flip-flop, we're still working on that.
And this would include young children, is that right?
Yes, this is all four-year, three and four-year-olds, yeah. So, um. In the River Center, that is something that can extend past this grant. Um, fairly easily. Um, so I'm like, we're excited about that. River Center has a lot of supports for the community, most of which, I mean, we do, and we actually have them up here more than we have them anywhere else, working with some of our um. Kids in high school, but they have, like, for instance, uh. Programs that can provide free tax services for families, uh. They, there's a, there's a variety of services that they can offer the community and so getting them back in here and um being able to support the education and well-being of our community, we're excited about.
Good.
I think uh this past week I had an opportunity to go to the National Superintendent's Conference for a couple of days, made a pretty quick. Quick trip and turn around, uh got to celebrate with actually quite a large group of New Hampshire um superintendents that live there. Um, Kimberly Saunders, the Superintendent of the Year, our partner over there in Conval. She was on stage as the finalist for the National Superintendent of the Year. Um, she did not become the National Superintendent of the of the Year, uh that went to a gentleman from, I think, Minnesota. But um we did have the loudest crowd and we were there to support her, it was really, really nice. Um, got to spend some time there with uh their board. Chair was there as well, we talked a lot about career and technical education, he's on some of those meetings that we have when he comes here. Um, and uh so it was nice to talk some education with a few people there. Uh, mostly, it was good to go to a lot of the sessions, the sessions were largely around um women in leadership. Um, uh literacy, so again, the science of reading, uh the personalizing learning, a lot of. Other presentations again are just uh good to remind us that we're moving in the right direction and continue to do so. The ones that were most um. Interesting and are gonna require a lot more conversation. And I think we're, you know, we're a little behind in this area is on the speed of um how we engage artificial intelligence. And the use of AI in our schools. So that was a heavy, heavy topic and um just looking at the speed of change, what that means for twenty-first century learning. Um, what does that mean about even, what does it imply about our pre-K and the K, not so much about having them working with technology and so forth, but how do we make sure that they have play-based environments that are giving them the critical thinking skills and the creative skills that they need in order to um do, you know, be able to enter a world that they're going to um always have a world with artificial intelligence? Um, and to be productive. And it's a whole different set of skills. One of the, what we call the three Rs, rather than the four Cs, you know, creative creativity and communication and collaboration and so forth. Um, the three Rs, reading, writing, arithmetic, the one that they stressed heavily was important for the future of being able to work with AI is literacy. Reading to be very articulate, be able to, you know, be able to um read well, be able to speak well. Be able to convey precisely what you want to convey in order to be able to give the directions you need in order to get the results you want from the forms of artificial intelligence that are out there, which are growing at a very fast rate. Generative AI and um they they showed us some new AI that had just come out that week. The speakers did, so. Um, a lot of different places taking. They're all taking different approaches, some people putting things in the policy right away, some people saying, nope, not gonna do that, we're gonna explore first and then policy second. Um, policy is gonna have to happen at some point in time, but um. Getting people together and making this a collaborative opportunity, working, bringing kids into the conversation, bringing community into the conversation is gonna be important so that we figure out how best to navigate um this changing world relative to artificial intelligence and what does it, what it means with learning um for our community. Uh, all, all of the presentations talked about it being like for the community, that you're going to do it differently for different communities. All of them stated, do not get scared of it, embrace it, don't try to stop it.
Yeah.
Because you're, you're not going to.
Maybe a lot of issues with AI is, I'm gonna always make the metaphor where it's like, some people, where people used to have to memorize phone numbers, now we don't because of these cell phones. It's similar to that where now we don't have to retain information, we'll just find it quickly. So with learning, it's gonna be a lot different, especially for young kids.
Yeah. And that's my report for now.
So does anyone have any questions for Ruben?
Yeah, I could, you, I was gonna ask this anyways, we did bring up the discussions around CTE. I know we submitted an application to the DOE like first week of January, have we heard anything back from that, either positive, negative? Indifferent?
Sure, uh I did receive an email with a question from one of the individuals from the DOE.
Okay.
Uh, and the question was if we had any more specific renderings of what the interior of the spaces were to look like. Um, I responded that that was not the level at which we had gotten to, um that we chose to take a more collaborative approach and that we um, that part of the collaborative approach is that once the concept is embraced, that the Department of Ed was going to give us some feedback and that we could engage in those conversations. But also that we didn't want to lock ourselves into a specific model right away, because the part of the conversation as a whole over the years about CTE has been about making sure that we built, designed flexible spaces. Um, for instance, if. I don't know, uh, let's say cosmetology, we we put cosmetology in place and for whatever reason, cosmetology is like suddenly, it's not. Um. It's not a kind of a course load or even uh an area of interest or uh even a job area. For whatever reason, suddenly people don't care what they look like. Um, like if that were to go away, what would we want to use the space, what would we replace it for, how could we make it sure that it was adjustable in order to then fit that? That changing learning experience. And so if you lock your center into a very um tight uh topic. And everything's like hard, fast, constructed that way and is not versatile, you know, that may not be the best approach to take. So we wanna make sure that we're uh me- meeting the needs of the future as well, or at least anticipating the needs of the future. But no, we have not had any real feedback yet.
They were looking for pretty pictures, you know, of indoor space.
Yeah, and I talked to Conval and they had not received any information either. I don't think the scenic has. But I did not ask that question specifically to them. I would have expected. To, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Given that.
It's been a month and a half.
Yeah, it's been a month and a half. Um, I think in the beginning, I think that they did say March, beginning of March was the timeframe, but. So I guess we're not there, it does seem a while.
Hmm, good, good question, good follow-up. Anybody else?
I guess I'm curious about how our, if you've had, if you have had any conversations with our teachers about AI and whether or not they feel that learners are using. AI to enhance their schoolwork in any way, you know, their thoughts on that?
Yeah, I I have not engaged anyone in that conversation at any reasonable level.
Okay.
So I don't have that information, um, I think that there's been a few conversations, small.
Right.
That I've been peripheral to. I would say that. I I wouldn't be very surprised if learners were not utilizing the tools at their.
Yeah.
At their fingertips.
Mm hmm. It's just interesting.
And you know, the, you know, one of the conversations is, yeah, there are things that can be done with artificial intelligence, generative AI. Um, and as educators, what is it we're assessing? What is it that we're asking to, for them to do? If we're asking them to accomplish a task that can be completely done by artificial intelligence, we have to at least ask that question, is this the task we want? To ask our, or have our. Accomplish. As opposed to taking that artificial intelligence and saying, hey. What can we, you know, could we take this and and how can we use it to have them think at a much higher level?
Mm hmm.
That's, that's what the books that I've, and the articles I've read on this would state, that it's, it's really about your critical thinking.
And comprehending the information versus just writing it down or spitting it out.
And also knowing what's truth and what's not, because generative AI can give you false information.
Yeah.
And so you've gotta be able to vet it, you've gotta be able to cite what you're doing properly and also, you know. Be able to uh utilize it for the purpose of performing a task that otherwise couldn't have been done by that, which is a much higher standard.
Yeah.
The world is rapidly, rapidly going away from the um. I think relying upon your standardized assessments as we, so. Be successful.
Long gone are the days of the book of court, right?
Oh, yeah.
Well, maybe in that, in that way.
Yeah.
Even in my day, when Spark Trans came out, that was, yeah, it still took, the teachers caught on pretty quickly, but still was, took a little while and then once it was made the book of course, which is.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
An interesting topic though, and an interesting thing to really think about in education, like twisting the AI to challenge the kids rather than for them to use it as a cheat or as like a way to get out of it. How can you actually use it to your benefit of higher education? It's a really cool thing to think about.
Yeah.
Huge, huge question. Last, last week, at the invitation of Principal Dustin, I, I attended the Screenagers event. And uh, you know, the date of that had been changed several times because of snow and weather, but the turnout was very low.
Mm hmm.
It was very low, I think there was one parent. And I kind of follow social media a little bit, I know we're just talking about AI, but they kind of flow together in a way. I was, uh, how many people have used or heard of Telegram? Like, we we know what Telegrams are, we stopped using the music, there's something called Telegram, they have eight hundred million monthly active users. And then if you go to Facebook, they're the top, they're, they've got three billion monthly active users. And when you go down the list, it's YouTube, WhatsApp, Instagram, TikTok. Doian. Kuai Shu, Snapchat. Twitter, of course, X is on the list. Sina Web, Wyvo and Pinterest.
Oh, Pinterest made the list, yes.
Pinterest has four hundred eighty-two million, four hundred eighty-two million active users, monthly active, so. We're gonna talk about critical shortage later.
Yeah.
In technology and sometimes between AI and then all of these social media platforms of which is, well, there's fifteen listed here, I'm sure there's many, many more. But how, how do we? Not only protect ourselves from plagiarism, but how do we help our, our learners take advantage of this? craziness, this is.
It's an interesting time, I think, well, I've scheduled myself to have some conversations and um with the elementary schools this week and certainly as we've talked about STEM, increasing STEM and everything, um, we, you know, we, we need to be well-planned, but. Um, I've. We've been at this for nine years, right? Part of that is like changing the curriculum, doing the work, um, getting the learning goals and the learning standards all situated within. Really, we've focused on the secondary level, grades six through twelve, and here they are in the springtime, they're gonna have the ASK accreditation coming here for a few days. They're probably gonna ask to talk to you, they've already asked to talk to me, um, one of those days I can't make it, so I have to uh change, you know, to one of the other two or three days that they have. But. The fact of the matter, I mean, so we're gonna be accredited or we are accredited, you know, right now, six through twelve for the first time. And it's because, partly because we have, and one of the requirements is that we have that seamless curriculum. And so it's been. Something that we really haven't focused on as intensely is the elementary um pre-K through five. And actually, a couple, few years ago, we never even talked about pre-K, we didn't talk about K through five, but pre-K through five curriculum. And the need to make sure that they also have those learning goals and so forth. And I'm, you know, part of me is like, oh gosh, I wish we had done it at the same time, and part of me saying. Actually, it's a, it's really great that we're gonna have these conversations over the next two or three years. With a fresh look at things, with understanding like AI, how is that now going to enter the conversation about how we do business? And again, you know, most of these AI platforms, you need to be thirteen or above or twelve or above to do, and that's okay. We don't need our elementary kids to use all the AI that's there necessarily. But it does talk about how their literacy skills are going to need to be enhanced and doing very well, you know, we've started to have this conversation. And that their creative, um, their creativity, their communication with one another, their collaboration and their critical thinking at younger ages needs to be built in there. And that redefines how you look at a learning goal and how you define what a learning goal is. So you have your standards, standards are standards, but there's a variety of ways to meet those standards. And then there's a variety of levels at which to meet those standards. It's very different to meet a standard and say, I can do this, this word problem, you know, by setting up this algorithm or whatever, or I can do a word problem. Um, or I, I can take a problem without words, create kind of a scenario myself, try, try it out and then solve the problem. You know, there's varying levels of being able to do this, the same standard. And so how do we do that? And that then implies, has major implications for how teaching and learning takes place within the classroom. And then that has, you know, implications for how your schools are structured, how your time is structured, everything. So, um. To your point, you know, we've got to, we've got to. Have the conversations about. Have the conversations about this. This world. That yes, has existed already, but is even within what we understand it to be is rapidly changing. They, you know, someone said, I think, two years ago, that was in a conversation I I had, but I don't know, it was maybe it was someone at SNHU or something like that, because they have. Um, some conversations about futurists and sort of. Um, that at some point within this. Decade, you know, it's very likely that every child's going to have their own little robot. You know, with them, that's going to be able, that they're going to be able to engage back and forth with and talk and then have, you know, exchange just and and be normal. Already they have, um, not necessarily a robot, but you can do have. Uh, one of the items that they showed us was a. A human. Basically, a digital human.
Does it do dishes?
Yeah, that's actually going to be a very difficult thing.
That's. I didn't say it was a robot. Not a three dimensional figure. Um, but something that's, you know, online where you can interact and that they will, um, they're they're programmed in a way to. Uh, be able to talk with emotion and be able to change the way that, you know, their facial expressions are, their hands are moving and so forth and. And be able to give information back and forth, also making them to be ethnically similar to other people. You can, you know. If you don't have the resources, like if you don't have the representation within your school to um have. Someone support a a learner who's from a specific background, you can, you know, they're going to have that ability to have. Someone who looks like them be able to communicate and work with them and provide support with them. It's going to be a normal thing.
Pretty amazing.
I mean, how, I mean, right now we all talk to Alexa or Google or whatever. So you get, it gets like a small experience. It's it's going to be a lot more.
Um, last June, I um. Participated in in International Technology Conference in Philadelphia for a few days. And then brought that. Uh, the AI lessons I learned there to um partner with. Uh, the high school librarian, Manana, for three days this summer, I created a newsletter. For um Manana, talking about AI uses in elementary and high school. Um, and if anybody wants, I I know it's an online. Newsletter that we did, so if anybody would like that, just let me know.
I think you're great.
And again, many things have changed just since last August.
Yes, yeah.
This, you know.
It's gonna be another hard thing is just keeping up.
Mm hmm.
Right, right? Once AI is.
But that's why you have your AI assistant, so you don't have.
Exactly.
You just have to steer the ship.
There's an anxiety just thinking about it. Don't worry, there'll be a computer. I could talk to you about it.
Yes.
Well, thank you for your update. If there are no more questions. We'll. We go to our consent agenda. When do we do that? And we've now made. Couple of changes to our consent agenda, taking the minutes out, which I think is very helpful since. Almost every time we get together, we end up doing that anyway. Uh, still, are there any questions? We've got a. Big budget transfer in here, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars almost.
I was just gonna ask if that was expected or not.
Yes, that was.
Expected or not. I looked at it and I see what it is for. I just.
Yeah, the one, the piece of that, well. Couple of things, like for instance, it's replenishing lines that we've used earlier to help support. Uh, like for for instance, I took a lot of curriculum money out of curriculum to support um some financial matters that we had. Early on with facilities.
Mm hmm.
And so. Now I've I said, I need that now. We're in the second half of the year. I need to pay people for their work with FPU and and so forth, less replenishment. Um, so that's that piece. The the food service alternate meals, that's something that we're going to have to deal with differently. We've had this issue for. A while, so we've had this conversation about the fact that. Um. You know, there are individuals who come and they get alternate meals and then they're not paying for it. So we've got to find better ways of trying to collect funds or. Figure out how we can get them sign up for, get get them the support that they need. Um, but we nonetheless have to. Eat the cost. We budget for a loss in food service in general. Um, but it's a little bit, it's a, it's higher.
Yeah.
And that's, that's been the trend. I mean. They were free for a couple of years, right? And. It's been tough. More so since also. Um, policies that we had in place. In the past. Um, I would say food service. Food services are not comfortable with what we've had in place in the past, uh, because you get into food shaming or things of that insurance. So. We've. Chosen not to go that route, especially because uh our last company actually was sued um for that very thing, not at our school, but from another location. And lost, they lost. So. Um, food sensitivity is a conversation that the board has had um off and on, and we know it's important that it's an important topic, but that's where some money is going. Um.
Is that the miscellaneous expenditures? As you're talking about?
Um, some of them.
Okay, so I, the only reason I asked was I I didn't see which line item would have been for the. Food service. But. And I was going to ask, I noticed.
Mm hmm.
Typically, I don't ask about these budget transfers, because I understand as you just explained that they're just a normal part of. I would move money about during the year, different times.
I can also say that ESOL services. Uh, we had budgeted at a smaller percentage, so we budgeted, we have money in there for those services, like twenty-five thousand. It's about even double that what what our needs are this year. So that's why we're just taking to build some other areas that we need to. The Keene State Professional Development Line, that one. Um, that's more of a. Uh, put it in there just in case, because I do have an inquiry into a grant. Um, the. The project qualifies for it. It's whether or not the group that we're working with is able to do the funding or not.
Yes.
So we already are part of their grant. It's a for MTSSP, SEL, things of that nature, but they just have to wait to hear back.
Mm hmm.
So. We will use the grant prior to using something else.
And. Are there other questions at this time about the consent agenda?
No.
And if not, would anybody like to make a motion for the consent agenda?
I'm actually doing a pretty uh cons- consent agenda.
A second.
Thank you, Nathan, and thank you, Kim.
Excited about the field trips. I like seeing those in there.
Yes. Yeah, the whole end of. End of year, moving on to the next thing. And so.
So if there are no other questions about the consent agenda. Then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. And opposed. Hearing none. Then it passes seven zero. Thank you, folks. And then we are gonna, I think, talk about the local critical shortage.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I would like to make a motion. To declare a local critical staffing shortage in the. Area of certified digital learning specialist.
Thank you, Christine. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there any discussion?
No.
I'm hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None, so that also passes seven zero. Okay, great. And then we have the minutes for February fifth and February seventh.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for February fifth and February seventh.
Thank you, Lisa.
A second, David.
And thank you, Nathan. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Abstained.
Aye.
Thank you, Kim. And so that motion passes six, zero, one. Okay, great. And then we're on to our action items.
So at the. Deliberate session, we had some changes that took place.
Mm hmm.
And. Um, we. Prior to sending out the. Documentation that we usually send out to the community uh as a bogus guide. Um, we need to have some, we have to have revotes in a sense on your support or not support of the articles, because they are not the same ones that you voted on before.
Mm hmm.
So Article two. Uh, there was a change. In that someone uh moved to. Put. Eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars back into the budget for the purpose of RMS STEM. That number is now. Uh. In that thirty-one million, eight hundred sixty-three thousand forty-three dollars. The default budget didn't change. I know there was a conversation at that night to do something with a default budget. But it wasn't legal, so that didn't happen. And so we would ask for. The board to. Vote on whether. You recommend it. The voters or not recommended. So where you see recommended by the Jaffrey Cooperative School Board by a vote of. Blah, blah, blah. We would need it to be. You know.
Mm hmm.
A number four against abstain.
Okay, so this is Article two.
This is Article two.
Yeah, I don't really. I'm seeing something about totaling, but then the default, I guess my brain is just not comprehending.
Uh, you were, you missed all the fun for it. It's really differences. They added money to the. Budget and.
The regular budget, not the default.
I I.
Or you thought the default had to change.
Then no, they want, there was a motion to, there were several motions, couple of motions. One motion didn't get very far, and there was some conversation about the legalities of it. There was a motion to cut the budget by, I think, roughly half a million. That got. Turned it down. And then um there was a motion to add money back into or money into the proposed for the purpose of. Um, the STEM teacher over at RMS.
Okay.
Yep, and so that did pass.
Okay.
Now, that motion does not have legal authority to direct us to hire a STEM person.
That's correct.
But it does have legal authority to change.
It changed the number.
Yeah.
Okay.
So so the proposed is now eighty-nine thousand five hundred higher than the last time you voted for.
Okay. Because of adding.
Yeah.
Not a position, but.
Well, I guess I think they just can't write it in the wording, right? Is that?
Right, they're they're not, we, they can't. Their wishes.
Yeah.
Is for the RMS. STEM.
Yeah.
I would.
And I would hope that it does go to the end and then pass that, but it's just it couldn't be.
Um, but it is. The community can't say you have to spend this on this. They can only give you a number.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
They give a number.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we. Uh. Recommend. Uh, the amended warrant article to. Hey, thank you, Charlie.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Christine. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, any further discussion on this? Well, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstained. No, so that passes seven zero. Thank you, and then.
And that one's. Really fun.
I've got that. It's only taken.
That originally was so that we would sell it. For it and then split it the money, but then it got changed, so just retain.
All right, so this next one.
Yeah.
So if it opens up, let's go both.
Is. I know. Article four.
Uh huh.
And that was the petition. The petition article is, has has changed. Significantly um from what it was before. So um, the motion was made and it passed. Shall we express an advisory view that the school board retain? Ownership of the district-owned land located on Route two oh two, generally described as. Jaffrey Tax Map two forty lot fourteen dash one and Ridge Tax Map ten lot thirty. The prior article. Had to do with selling the property and. Providing it back to the taxpayers over three. So.
Seven years period.
People don't want, they want us to keep the land.
That's what this motion was amended to.
Okay.
And the deliberative session approved the amendment.
And to, and the reason for the first part of it, shall we express an advisory view? Is to note that this is an advisory petition. Either way, none of them ever compelled the board to have to do something. But. Um, it's. Telling people that this is this petition regardless of how it was worded, was advisory.
Yeah. So as in like, like. Does this take off talk like later about selling the land? Are we just keeping it for a little bit longer? Like, what was that all about? It just like says. We're not going to sell the land. We're always going to keep it.
Well, the 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 person who made the petition talked about future lease uses of the land. He was one of the members of the Route two oh two Advisory Committee. That met or not Advisory Committee, Visioning Committee that met last year. I think about four or five times and the the recommendation of that committee was that the land. Was a unique resource for the district and it should be kept.
Mm hmm.
And that recommendation, I think there were eight or ten people on that. Committee and it was unanimous. If they thought. It should be retained. The answer is this advisory for this year. Somebody can put a warrant article on next year's.
Yeah, sure, saying let's. Pitch it. Okay, gotcha.
It's not one of those that think it's.
Okay.
They they think it's voted down and they can't like, they can do it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And and I think the way it works is that the. The voting public has to approve the purchase of a property like that, but the disposal of it. Goes to the. School board.
I feel.
I understand.
Am I right in the feeling that it seems like? The people who are talking about this. Have put thought into. Trying to have the school use it as an opportunity rather than just being like, we want our money back. Is that like a? The thought? No. We would know.
Person who wrote the original warrant article.
Yeah.
Wanted to use the money to offset taxes.
Yeah.
They had nothing to do about future use of it or anything.
The original one saying that we should sell it.
As a matter of fact, the petitioner felt that the district could never afford. Um, to improve that land.
Right.
Because it would require bond issues and much more money than.
Yeah.
And taxes than what we could afford.
Right.
The answer to your question was, the petition was not put on there looking toward future. Future uses of.
No, 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 but then this one is. The first one was like, I want my money back. This one is them thinking a little bit more like, we need a little more time, like, can this will use this?
I don't know. Maybe, I almost take it.
No, no, you don't think.
So yeah, my my personal one is I think they just went up and just just kind of just reversed it just because they didn't want it to go to sell in general, not just. To say to use it, I mean, I. I thought it was just more of just a kind of turn it around. Just say, uh huh.
Oh.
Doesn't make personal.
Yeah, yeah.
I just didn't get the idea that they were like, oh, well, we can use it for this in the future.
Okay, they didn't give a specific use, but someone spoke to. The the hope and the wish that. The land will be used for. The next generation for their educational purposes.
Yeah, and and the person that made that. Uh. Amendment Owen Houghton was one of the people on this visioning committee, so he's been very involved, you know, from the beginning with that and. You're right, there are no firm plans there now. But in, I think in. His opinion and. Guess I won't. Speak for him, but I think I feel comfortable saying, based on, you know, attending those meetings with him, he does see the value in retaining the land, and that was. You know, regardless of any other motion that was made, that's. Kind of been what he's expressed and what that whole committee expressed.
And he and he stated when he was. There at the deliberative session, he stated that the. Uh, land may it may may not be used during. His time, in a sense, and. Okay.
Mm hmm.
And that speaks to the future generation.
Mm hmm. All right, and Lisa, is that where you were thinking?
Yeah, this um.
Yeah, this um this simply clarifies the legality that the school board has the decision making rights in this, the town's deal. And so this is, I don't think this has anything to do with usage or non-usage on its future, whatever. It's simply saying. Legally, yeah, and we have to have because it was a petition that was, that's approved on it. We can't, we can't just erase the warrant article. Warrant article has to say something, so this just clarifies the legality of who actually is the decision making body.
So I'd like to speak just a little bit to our site visit today because it does tie into this discussion. Um as two years ago, we made a contract with New England Forestry to organize a timber sale for us. And because of changes in climate, because of the weather. That was never done. It was too soft to get in and, and get the timber out. And as the forester explained to us today. Timber quality is better when it's harvested in the winter. Some of the uh red oak in particular, which is the most valuable, timber being pulled out of there. This has a different color when it's harvested in the cold weather. Uh it's also though important to call to be able to get the big equipment in there. Uh we saw two things today. There were uh several of us from the uh district there. Uh Chris and I were there, so was uh Trey Horn and uh and Jeremy, Jeremy Barrett. From the Mendez Department. There were also two members of the Ringe Energy Committee there and the Ringe Energy Committee had approached us. Over a year ago about the possibility of using that site for solar panels, which could be a revenue source for the district. That is, by the way, one of the items that the Visioning Committee talked about and. All the members of the Visioning Committee were in favor of solar use, providing that it's feasible. In terms of cost and other issues. What we saw today was very encouraging in two respects. One, well, more than two. In preparing to get the equipment in there, a, a lot of rock was dumped on the access road. The access road is much more developed now than it was six months ago. And that access road was formerly the old route, well, currently the old Route two oh two. So it was already a fairly, you know, well-defined dirt track. But it's been upgraded by the positioning of big stone, you know, three inch stone in several softer spots. When we got up to the top, which is the area where the original school building was proposed to be built. Uh fairly close to the road, by the way. You know, five minute walk up. That area is completely clear now. It didn't have any timber. There previously, it had buckthorn and br- uh brush and shrubs, but nothing of any value. That's all considered off as a working area where they're bringing out thousands of logs, I guess. So, so uh it's, it's a big, fairly big area, flat. I believe it's the Carter Hill. Portion of the land, all that's been known as that, but it's close to an acre in size. Relatively flat, I say fairly high. There's actually a view of Mount Manadok, you can see through the uh, through, through the woods. Uh in addition to that, the Ringe Solar Committee gentlemen who were there pointed out that the site that they were looking at. Or recommending was on a slope off of that Carter Hill. So it would not impact the use of that area for a building site. But it would um be easily accessed again because the road is now. You know, better developed and uh. Fairly close to the road. The entry point is right in Jeffrey. You head up the hill, you get to the. Boundary line between Jeffrey and Ringe and uh within a couple hundred yards or maybe a hundred yards. So it's uh, the site I'm talking about is in Ringe, the access point in Jeffrey. And, and I mentioned that because it's, it's sort of good news in terms of access, but also in terms of thinking about future. Future use, whatever that might be.
Interesting.
Okay, so we need a motion.
Make a motion to accept Article six. As competitive, as amended.
Thank you, Lisa. Good, thank you, Charlie. I think I heard Charlie first. Uh all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. None. So that passes seven zero. And then there's a flooring that approved.
So at our last meeting, uh the board approved the painting. And the flooring. Um and then has, and so, you know, part of that. Motion was to allow the superintendent to enter into an agreement and so forth. So I have. Signed the. Painting contract, so that is all situated. The other flooring company, which was very similar in total cost to this one right here. Um there was a variation as to which school was gonna cost more and so forth, but some of those parts is very similar. Um the reason for choosing the other one was because we had prior history with them and they determined that uh they needed to back out. And so um we did reach out to see if this, because we had already told this group that they were not awarded. Um they said that they would honor this and so we're asking to have. Be bid awarded to absolute floors LLC instead.
Luckily, they kept it and didn't, pretty surprised.
We would be probably never brought it back.
Yeah.
Yeah. Same product.
And that's good then.
Yeah. Same scope.
And so I'll just. Um motion to approve the flooring bid to absolute floors LLC and to. Authorize this superintendent to. Into authorize a superintendent to sign off or approve the.
I will second that.
Thank you, Nathan. Thank you, Christine. Is, is there any discussion? Do we need a not to exceed? Is that, so do we need a not to exceed?
It should be for, yeah, to, um the way we did the last motion was. To not exceed uh the. So, or, or you can say for the cost of. Ninety five thousand five hundred seventy five.
Nathan, would you like to?
Yeah, I'd um.
amend, amend.
Amen.
Amend it's and amend my motion to. Um number one, allow the superintendent to. Um. Go into the new agreements um to approve um absolute floors LLC. And this whole cannot exceed ninety five thousand five hundred and seventy five dollars.
And I still second.
That was not perfect, but.
Thank you, Nathan. Thank you, Christine. Okay, if there is no further discussion, then. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed. None, so that passes seven zero. Great. And then we are on to our policy. Uh the agenda says first reading, however, these are second readings.
It says second.
Was just a typo in.
They are, and if we could open each of those up, please, there's pieces that I really would like you guys to just take note of. This was not in the um. Agenda that Justina sent us. I had to go back to her and ask her to place it in. It is in the agenda that's online on the website. So if you're just looking through your email agenda, you're not gonna see these. You need to go to the district uh website. Um so the only language change is highlighted in this and we went back to get, just make it clearer what we were asking for. Um whose opening doors and how they are being kept open and who is the authority at each school? And how that's gonna be documented and communicated was, you just need the clarification. Um and so uh Charlie put together this language pretty much and we felt it. As a policy, we still have to have some vagueness. We're talking about buildings that have a lot of different uses. But this helped clarify some.
The facilities look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think, I think facilities would like something really specific. Through the school and so I do make the recommendation that that becomes a focus. Like I sensed frustration. Um I sense frustration on two levels. One, the, the day to day living with custodial staff taking care of these spaces. With uh multiple community groups, everyone has a different sense. So I sense frustration there, but I also sense the frustration. Um in budgeting for the staff needed to cover these times. And so I do wanna make sure that that's understood, that that is part of it. Yeah, we, we do have staff that work outside of school hours and that does re-budget it and. And the board recognizes that, like this is, we are a community, you know, we, we want to have a place in the community. That's a, that's a hard balance to have, but um. But hopefully this policy helps clarify some of that, but it really does have to come from the principals, really communicating very well. Uh with, with the custodial staff and facilities to make sure that everybody's getting what they need and the community groups. This isn't. You know, this policy can't just be put away and not seen. And I will say with that in mind, um. About three weeks ago, when we looked at the policy database, it was not, it was offline and it is still offline and that's not okay. Um so we really need to have access, like this is completely frivolous if the public and the schools and nobody can see. What our policies are. So I, I'm not pleased that that's not taking care of that. I'm sorry. I, I hope this gets taken care of soon. I know that there's been glitches uh going on, um but. To not have access still is frustrating.
And thinking about this and looking at this issue and related issues. Um relating to waivers and everything else. What is apparent is that, you know, we're in a, a new era where school security is more challenging, more important. It'll probably never be foolproof, but uh there will be a cost. And I, I mentioned that because, you know, the, the question arises, who's gonna monitor that door when it's open? Well, unless you get a volunteer who's, you know, reliable, that you're gonna have to pay someone. And if it's only for an hour that it's open while the public is arriving or whatever the situation is. There's gonna be a cost as we go forward with these things.
I did wanna ask, do we know if our, if our door is open so the public can get into our meeting late?
Wasn't when I came in. Not getting late.
So it could be that members of the public showed up tonight and weren't able to.
Yeah.
I think there was at least fifty people that wanted to come.
Yeah, yeah, they were lined up outside.
I hear what you're saying. I, I, I know.
And we had, um.
I know.
One of the meetings, if we were gone, that we had people that were outside, wanted to come in. Luckily, they.
Yeah.
But they got ahold of someone. Yeah, no.
Sandy, somehow they have her cell phone number.
Um and she doesn't even know how they got her number, but they luckily just got it.
No, I, I understand. It's definitely, definitely something that needs to be addressed. And it's not easy. It's not easy. And on Sunday, there was basketball practice at RMS and. You know, not school basketball practice and the doors were propped open, but not just that. The group got access into the building as they had wished, but then the gym was locked. And they had no access to the gym for until someone.
It's about a half an hour.
Yeah, who was able to come out. I, yeah, so it's, it, it is a frustrating situation on, on all parts. And I don't know what the answer is, but certainly propping RMS open with big orange cones is just.
That's not what we wanna do.
It's not what we wanna do. It's not keeping the building safe and someone's gonna trip on those cones and get hurt. I mean, it's just.
Energy. Also not keeping it warm during.
All, all of that.
It happens every weekend.
Yep.
And as a school board member, I'd like to, I'm there and I would like to say. This is the policy, but I'm not quite sure what we're supposed to do there.
Yep, I, I go to the same thing. I drive up and I'm like, ah.
Common sense would say it would be unlocked.
Yeah.
We, we're gonna need to meet with the building principals because they do have the ultimate authority and we don't wanna take that away, but also. You know, there may be costs and po- part of this policy is to secure the rest of the buildings, right? So if somebody gets in for attending a basketball game, they shouldn't be able to wander throughout the rest of it. And that's also gonna require either purchasing or erecting or, you know, doing something to. Screen off places.
That's one of the nice things that RMS is, that it is closed off to get into the gym and nowhere else.
Okay.
Yeah, and we might even wanna be thinking about where we hold our. More meetings again as a result of this, because this right here, we have those doors unlocked. You have free access to the cheer squad that is out there doing their stuff. You have the upstairs, you have, you know. There are parts where you couldn't get through, but you know, it's, this is.
Possibly not ideal.
Are you suggesting we move to our?
You know, if we did, you could even open just the cafeteria or only.
In context of what we were talking about. We might need to consider something at least differently. I mean, I like, I like the space. This is a convenient space, certainly for a lot of reasons. But um if we're talking about safety and security. This, this is a little bit.
Yes.
Well, but.
This is a little bit more difficult to secure.
What, what I would suggest.
Door over here, which we could, you know, change, but.
Well, sorry, what I would suggest is that we encourage our building principals to base this issue and make some recommendations to us. Because even if we move from here, there are still gonna be other uses of this building that require doors to be opened. And, you know, the issues that we was talking about, access to the rest of this building, there's gotta be a protocol. And it's not rocket science. I think we can do it.
There's AI, AI to figure this out.
Have the same guy that does the dishes come in and watch the door.
I mean, yeah, there's plenty of doors around, but, I mean, obviously. A very good solution, even in short term, if we can't figure it out yet. Would be the RMS cafeteria, because all the windows, you can just open that one door to the cafeteria, lock the other one and people can just use that.
Providing we can turn off the freezer or whatever the refrigeration.
It's so loud.
And then not, and then plug it back in afterwards, right? That's, that's, it's not hard to unplug. It's the.
Remembering.
It's remember to plug it in later, yeah.
Geez, not good.
That was, it is not the easiest place to listen. It is jar drawbacks.
Yep.
Still, we've been over here for a long time, so maybe we may consider.
All right, so that policy ECA. Is there more? Yeah, one more, yeah, thank you. Um so the next policy is talking about um when we have a um. Mid-year vacancy with the school board in particular. This policy is um from the Hampshire School Association and it includes moderator and things that don't affect us, but can certainly stay in. Um uh because truthfully, the moderator does affect us, meaning we, we do have school board moderators, so. Um but if there's a vacancy on the school board, if you could, could we keep scrolling down a little bit? Uh yeah, budget committee moderator, keep going. Um these, these are not terribly important. They just talk about what would constitute, you know, those, but then um. Right here, they'll keep going down, keep going down. All right, so currently what we've been doing is kind of doing in-house quiet, not. I mean. I can't say untransparent, we're, we're absolutely following the. I can't say untransparent. We're, we're absolutely following the law when we fill these vacancies, but. They, it doesn't seem to involve the community at all. And so this New Hampshire School Board Association policy. Just advises that we would make these decisions in a more public. Setting, meaning we've posted, you know, it's posted on the district website when there was a school board. Um, vacancy, which we've never done, as far as I know, like not, I know two times I've seen it.
Yes.
Um, so it's posted and then the opportunity to discuss any interviewing is done at a public meeting. That's a, that's a novel idea. So that's, these pieces are brand new. They are not legally required. What we are following the law of how we're doing it now by having the town representatives. Select the person, that is the law, but this kind of makes it a little more community investment. Um, so.
Might get more, might get more people involved in a vacancy and they'll come in. You know, see the person talk and they like them before they get appointed.
Right.
You know, they'll help, they'll go just. Because, you know, I, I've gone ahead and people say, oh, I didn't know you were in the school board, which I had to say. You know, things like that. And I understand.
Things two together.
But, you know.
Hire people.
So that way, yeah, that way, um, you can involve them and I think it will go a long way with it.
Well, again, we were talking too about how it can't be, it's not like a back and forth interview, but more of like them representing who they are. And then. Voting off of that, not like, well, what did you do last weekend? Kind of like, what skill set? Can I see your social media? Like, nothing like that, like, like you would do online, like it's always been done. You, you state your case and then. Yeah. Yeah. This is definitely much more transparent, much more transparent, sort of like that.
So if we're ready to vote on them, I make a motion that we accept these two policies.
I second.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Kim. Is there any discussion about these motions about these policies, Amy? No, so seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So the carry seven zero. Great, thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
I guess if I can, I just want to.
Please.
Make clear in case anybody ever watches this and they're wondering why we don't require a special election. Be, if a school board member resigns. Um, or a seat becomes vacant and it is because, I believe it's because of the cost to the taxpayers of holding that type of election. Is that correct? Is that everyone else's assumption? By doing, filling a vacancy through an interview process. Um, instead of an, an election, it. Saves the taxpayers a significant amount of money. Is that?
It's going to fall on when the election's going to happen anyways, yeah.
Right, it's only up until the next.
The next one, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
So even if it's a three-year term, the term of the appointed person is only until the next March.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it says why in the statutes, but it's clear in the statutes.
I know, I just want, I just want that to be out there.
It's not up to us.
Right.
And it's not just school board either. I mean, if you go to the town offices, the town office is the same way.
Okay.
It's about efficiency. I'm sure it's about cost. I'm sure it's about, you know, there's probably.
Yep.
Quite a few reasons. But also given. The permission to the governing body that was chosen to make these decisions at a temporary level anyway. Until such time as all, that has already been scheduled and has been allotted to provide everyone with the opportunity and voice to be able to weigh in. Which is what we get to do in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so we have board committee updates. So we last. Met on. The fifth and. Any committees that have met since then, if you, anybody who has an update, please?
No, we had the education committee a, a couple of days after. Charlie, do you want to go or do you want me to? Did Charlie, did you want to explain the, the committee or you want me to?
Sure, you can if you want.
I was going to do the same thing as you, so.
All right. Come on in.
We get a handout, so, um, the education committee just talked about, um, the activities update, looking at after-school activities and everything. Um, thinking of K, K through twelve updates, um. Elementary, everything, so they had, um. Elementary right now, there, there's a lot less afternoon, um. Activity, but they, they're starting be active mornings, which is before school, Destination Imagination is something that's been going off for forever. And looking at what they do have for, um, elementary, they have art, crochet, running. Um, and range, just to name a few. Jaffrey, I guess one of the differences, they have algebra board games. Irish dance, that was one I, one I really wanted to go to. Or really just to highlight, um, that there's a lot of. Acti- activity going with activities, but a lot of people going to them and going to multiple different ones and just, um. Um, like it was funny for me because I didn't know they actually had like video game ones for like esports and even just lunches. They just called Nintendo. For, um, the middle school. But, um, more, more kids are going to stuff like, um, first robotics. Animations like football, esports like I mentioned, wrestling. So they're projecting, um. Um, some, some of these top sports will be going to varsity programs, so that's a good thing. I think one of the ones that they kind of mentioned, they could be. Like wrestling and other things, so just making them go into actual varsity sports. One of the things they were mentioning was, um, some of the students are, are wanting to get involved in like, um, leading their own club activity programs. So that would be great to just, I mean, I, I would, um. Like to see that just help with leadership with, with, with that and just. Um, them having a say in the activities. One thing that I guess she mentioned was, um. Who was it? Heather, right? Yes. I'm very bad with names, so I have to remember.
Heather Lindstad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, was it she did, she's going to do a, um, activities fair to have, um. I think, um, to have students, I mean, parents come just to say what ideas for activities to have in the future. Kind of playing ahead of time, just to gauge. Um, have what people might want and what they can do. Which is great and. Another thing to highlight was just high school leadership opportunities. Work with mentoring with other students, coaching, fundraising, game crews. Always like to see leadership with. I always like to see leadership opportunities for. Kids to grow that. But without reading the entire thing, that's kind of highlights of it.
Great. Thank you, Nathan.
It is, I would say, the most, one of the most common questions I get in Jaffrey is. What can we do to get more after-school clubs at JGS? And I always say. You need to reach out to the building principal or to Heather Lindstad, but I don't know if that anyone ever does, but. I hear that question all the time. What can we do to have our kids be busy after school so they're, they're not on the. Library lawn roaming around town, so parents feel they're safe.
So I, I mean, I brought it up in some sense because I have three in grade school and one of the issues that. It's difficult for us, we can't time outs to, like some, some of these programs end before I get home from work, so I. Don't get there to pick them up and there's no after-school bus, so.
Yep.
I might not always work with every set of parents, so.
Nothing ever does.
Discussion that. It's more difficult with the energy. Like I said, Middlesbrough High School, I think a lot of them can just walk home and stuff in this little year.
Yeah.
The grade school, it's a lot difficult, a lot more difficult, I should say. Just with timing and everything and not everyone less their grade school will walk home, but I don't mind. Should start thinking about that more, but I don't and, um. Yeah, that's just something to look into in the future.
And RMS has the, not RMS, but the. Ringe rec department has, will have a bus. I don't know if it's for every after-school club, but we'll pick kids up. At Ringe and bring them to the Ringe after-school. Club.
There are ongoing negotiations, although I think that they've been moving slowly. About instituting an after-school program here in Jaffrey. The Jaffrey Ringe Rotary is interested in being involved on some level. There have been some discussions, I think Ruben mentioned. In dealing with the town over the memorandum of understanding, there was some discussion. Of the town's interest through the town, Jaffrey Town Rec Department. And I recently followed up with the town manager who confirmed. That providing the district is able. To provide a site. And the site presumably would be the grade school. That the rec department would be interested in running that, or at least talking about it. And I know that the Rotary is also interested in seeing. If through the interact program and through Rotary volunteers and perhaps some limited funding. That we might be able to. Help support that. I believe that there have been several attempt, there, there have been several meetings and I think there's. An attempt to hold another meeting with Deanna. In the coming weeks.
Yeah, either this week or next week. I think it's this week. We were originally invited, I don't think. I'm going to the next one anyway. To have conversations about it. Also, I've already had conversations with Franklin Pierce University regarding. A future and future ideas that we have, um, about them. In similar fashion to how they are funding these literacy nights and some of the after-school programming that I talked about. Um, at a limited level, they have funds to provide for their. Pay their, um, students to do work in the communities.
Yeah.
And they would much prefer to have. Opportunities that. One, their kids would enjoy, but also feel like they are giving back to the community in a really meaningful and durable way. Uh, which, you know, with younger children.
Yep.
Um, is let up their alley and so, wow, that would help to make an after-school program sustainable. That is actually what we did when, when, um. It was like the second or third year I was here, we didn't have, probably ended the Jaffrey Grade School Program, the Twenty First Century Program that was funded. Sorry, it was funded through a Twenty First Century grant. The sustainability plan wasn't developed, it didn't, you know, couldn't move forward. We weren't provided with a. Uh, a grant to keep on going with that. Process and so I went out and explored in the community and found the, at that time, it was. The Bible Conference area and so they said that they were interested in doing something of that nature and to help them be sustainable. Um, we of course helped them with the busing and everything, but they went to FPU and FPU provided them. A lot of support that way that they could provide to our community as well.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Resources like that, those types of partnerships are important to provide. So that you can be sustainable and part of that sustainability is, um. Like, you know, at least a couple things are low cost. Um, and also numbers of people to support it.
Yep. Well, it looks like forward progress is being made, so that's good.
Yep.
However. It's clear that, uh. We're going to need some incremental resources. Because as we get more participants, we're going to have to have more room. And if we. Want more participants, we're going to have to have a late bus. So if we add late buses, we'll have more participants and we'll have to have more room. So Ruben has already volunteered his office space.
And if you're going to drive a bus, yeah.
Yeah, well, we do have conversations with the bus company. You know, it's been a tough, it's been a tough couple of years. We have a contract for twelve bus routes. We paid. No less for ten at this point in time because of. The shortage or the. Well, we'll just say a shortage of, of the bus, uh, bus drivers, um, for various reasons. And the question is, can we function on them? If that was just the plan. I don't know, we have to talk about that if, and they, well, we have budgeted for twelve, we have a couple of late buses. Is that a possibility? So those are conversations we have to have. Let's, you know, in theory, you have these. Buses traveling at different timeframes, so the bus drivers would possibly, you know, at least have a couple who would be available for that. But that being said. We don't always have the easiest time finding bus drivers who want to do those athletic events, right? But this would be a set daily time as opposed to, you know, leaving and coming back at ten.
Mm-hmm.
Eleven o'clock at night, so I, I get the hesitation for someone to want to do that.
Yep.
Yeah, but it is, but Charlie brings up the point. That's transportation's huge. Huge need, huge cost.
Yep.
And as we move towards our voting day and try and keep most of our taxpayers happy, even though. School is expensive, these are the kinds of things that, uh, that we can mention. And transportation is an important part of being able to provide after-school services. Having security at the schools involves having people who we pay to make sure our, our community members can get into our schools. Without compromising safety. A lot of things. We've provided these services that Ruben explained to us tonight. It can be fairly expensive to charter schools in the area who have. Special needs students that need support. All these are things that, that we do as a, as a district.
And many, many things are relatively new. I mean, safety and security is not new, but the level at which you do safety and security and what is needed. You know, is, is different all the time. Charter school support for students is relatively new. And it takes a lot of time. These are costs that you're going, you have to incur.
So do we have any other committee updates? The facilities committee did meet today. It was focused quite a bit on how things are going with the HVAC. Things have improved over the past month. The EEI, the contractor, sent in one of their specialists, uh, specialists in. Closing out projects, identifying problem areas and looking at solutions and. So we have, uh, two gentlemen that have been working on that and they're making progress. There's still more to be done.
It'd be nice to have a few.
Oh, rooms are warm. Uh, some of the rooms that were real problem areas are warmer now. There are still places that need to be addressed.
It would be good, I was going to say, it would be good to have a few. You know, good cold days. Uh, in a row so that we could make sure that we have the information.
Yeah.
Now this week. Well, the solar subcommittee has not met in quite a while, but I think I will call for another meeting. To see if there is any. Whether we should close it out. Or whether we should continue to pursue.
You're talking about the solar?
The solar subcommittee on Route Two O Two.
So, I, you know, Jaffrey has been moving forward with its community power plans.
Yep.
And there was a meeting held last Saturday. Where revision energy was present. Now, they're not the ones doing Jaffrey Community Power, however. They did inform us that they are opening a solar array on the closed Jaffrey landfill.
Yep.
That's going to happen this spring. And in addition to that, they are moving forward with their other part of their plan, which is. To officially legally decommission their wastewater creeping lagoons. Those have already been closed. I think they're already in proper situation for use, but they have, there's a legal process. Once that's finished, uh, there is a plan to put another solar array at that. Wastewater lagoon site. What revision energy is doing is they're talking about selling the panels. To people whose homes are not conducive to putting. In solar. People who have, let's say, a lot of tree coverage, who can't, or they're facing in the wrong direction. So they can buy the. So they can buy the panels and get the energy credits, at least the generation. Part of the energy credit. Uh from those panels that they buy. Interesting thought, in any in any case. There was a discussion and afterwards there was a opportunity to talk with. People from Revision Energy and Standard Power, I think is the other company. But Revision is interested in knowing about our site and uh. At the very least, I we've had a couple of uh email and phone conversations about. How we could possibly work with. We're then, so Christine, you and I should get together and come up to date on. On this stuff and.
Okay. I was sharing with Christine that I was typing up a a a motion. I very much would like to get. Real information of what this would cost, what this would look like.
Mm-hmm.
Um so I didn't even, I didn't know we had a subcommittee, so I'm sorry.
It had reached a a roadblock because the cost to have a feasibility study was so high. That it just seems, you know, it like it impossible situation. Plus, Ringe has said that they don't want to buy power from us and Jaffrey. May not need it. So. It had kind of been dead in water.
But this could be a uh an income generating opportunity.
Yeah.
For the district. And there's there's certainly been no agreements made or anything like that, but there is still interest and. One of the members of the Jav- of the Ringe Energy Committee, Richard Miller. Uh mentioned that. Recently, FAM Steel and Ringe had. A uh the power connection brought in, the power study.
Mm-hmm.
That was thought to be so expensive and the the study that they did came in. At a lower price than what was talked about. I think it was twenty to thirty thousand that was. Discussed as the possible cost. It's.
I.
It it's believed that it it could be more favorable than that.
Okay.
So.
We'll talk.
And it is hard to know whether any of this will move forward this year or in the next five years, but I think there's still things to be looked at and. Certainly, if I was a member of any community's governing body, I would have more information and. I I think that's part of what the people in range would like to know. So we'll see. So as a range taxpayer. All right, my neighbors may not wanna buy power. From the school district, but they certainly would like to see the school taxes go down.
Uh-huh.
So they're gonna benefit from it no matter what. And I think it's one of those things like when we look at uh. Uh the decisions we made around benefits. And how that has helped us in the long run and some of the other strategic decisions that we've made, I think that. This falls in that category. It's it's a long-range benefit to not only the school district, but to towns as well. Because even though Jaffrey may have its own power source, it still pays school taxes, not much, but still pays some.
So I very much would like to at least move forward to find out. Okay, firmly, what a feasibility study would look like in cost and timeline. What would be the process of getting that done?
Yeah. I will pull a meeting together.
Oh, it'd be it would be lovely if by, yeah, I'd put down August. If by Aug- if by August we had an idea of this is how much it would cost, then we could add it to the budget. But uh there is a lot of interest in in using the property in that way. Um it's it's certainly worth worth checking out and not being beaten, but you know. I'd like to get rid of the nebulous piece of it. I would like to like, no, let's find out what this is. You know.
It it feels like we're moving slowly but deliberately in that direction and the information today about the site. Where the solar panels might be most probably used, not interfering with the building site, that was. Pretty important information.
Yep.
Let's try and get some more.
Call your people, Christine.
Hey, are we uh ready for public comments, second session? Alex, would you like to?
Public comment coming up.
Okay. Well, then, if anybody does raise their hand, let us know, and then in the meantime, what about board matters? Does anybody have a board matter they'd like to bring forward? Okay, so if there are no board matters at the moment, then we would just need.
I'm at I second.
Motion. Yeah, got a motion and a second.
Hi.
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 Those are packed up, ready to go out the door.
Forget it.